Welcome, everybody, to the November 8th meeting of the Hadley Select Board. And this is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee as well. So we're calling the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Let's go over to the -- oh, that's okay. So I'm going to turn this over to Joyce Chumbolo for a moment. Joyce has a couple of things that she'd like to say at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. We'd like to extend our condolences to the Woskevich family and to John, our Select Board member, at the loss of his mother, Elsie Woskevich. She was a force to behold here in the town of Hadley, needless to say. She did 4H, she ran the concession stand down at the fairgrounds, she did Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, Lassie League, she was a major at Hunter County, major advisor for the Hopkins Academy Band. She also was Hampshire County Triad. And for the last part of her position in Hadley, she did the Hadley Council on Aging as an outreach coordinator. So to her and her family, we certainly wish her many sorrows and condolences, and hopefully she's at peace right now. So if we could have just a moment of silence for her, please.
The bells are ringing in the background. Okay, so on with the regular business of the Select Board. So we do have a consent agenda this evening, and included in the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes from September 20th and October 4th. We have free warrants, payrolls 1818, and then payables 1817 and 1817S. We have a recommendation for the hiring of a DPW mechanic, Brian Lamorande.
Lamorande.
Lamorande, okay. We have a request for one-day liquor license. This is the top of the campus Mullen Center for basketball games to be held on November 10th, 19th, 21st, December 16th, 20th, 22nd, and January 3rd of 2018. And then we also have a request for a letter of support for the Hadley Snowmobile Club for a safe crossing, which is being presented by Steve Simples. Any comments?
Go ahead and move to a discussion.
Second.
Okay, moved to second for discussion.
Is there anything you can tell us about the mechanic? He's not joining us, is he, ma'am?
No. Well, Mr., would you like me to go through his qualifications and how we got to where we got it?
Short version, but yeah, please.
Mr. Lamorande currently works for another municipality, so working out the details of the board concurs to hire him. He comes with a lot of background and qualifications as a DPW mechanic. As we know, that position requires many different skills, not just one skill of repairing a certain piece of equipment. He comes with bus repair, large truck repair, heavy equipment repair, small repair. He also comes with some other skills. He's done tree work and other highway functions, such as snow and ice removal. As far as his mechanic's qualifications, he has a CDL Class B, a Oyster's 2A. He's a certified welder. He's also brake certified through the Department of Transportation, which qualifies him to work on our heavy-duty truck brakes. There's a certification for that.
Is there anything he doesn't have, Marle, that he would need to get in order to be worrying about, because all his -- everything he needs?
The newest job description I created required a couple of small ASC certifications, which he had when he worked for a bus company before he worked for the current DPW he's in. He said he'd more than happy to go get them. But as far as qualifications and skills, he fits what we need.
Excellent.
So any further questions? Any questions for the -- well, I guess one question I have for the Snowmobile group. Are you all set with the mechanic?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Steve, the safe crossing, can you just describe the safe crossing location, locations?
Well, it would be under the rail trail, or on the rail trail underneath Route 9.
But you're requesting it because of what reasons?
Well, they're lining Route 9, building the four lanes, which is going to be hard to cross. We've been crossing by standard vegetable land, by Leon, and that's going to just get wider, and you're putting up that housing and back there, too, so that's got to go somewhere.
Yep.
And it's mostly for safety, because if you go underneath Route 9, you don't have to -- we deal with any cars. We've been talking to the state about putting up like a pedestrian sign there, so we pressed a button and all the traffic stops. But we just really can't get to there anyway, eventually. It's not really -- that's not really feasible. We're going underneath, we have -- there's a mat that you put down, so you don't touch the blacktop or the concrete, whatever you put down there. And it just goes from -- keeps all the snowmobiles away from everybody, and underneath, away from cars.
During the winter, there is people that use the snow -- that path as well, though, right?
We're just getting -- we're getting on as soon as we can and getting off as soon as we can, right? We'll yell through line six there, and then by the immovers.
Okay. Is there any concern, I guess I think we're -- maybe Jerry's going, too. Is there people who, you know, I know in the winter sometimes people are snowshoeing, they're cross-country skiing and the like, so any concern? I'm just thinking about that section under there, where there might be a blind spot, where it's possible for somebody traveling at a faster rate of speed.
We would put speed limits on it, for sure.
There's going to be markings that you're going to be responsible for.
We're trying to do this for safety, so you're right. I mean, it does do that, so we can mark that very well. That's not a problem.
How is the environmental police chimed in on this at all?
That's what you're asking for the letter for, to go through.
That I really don't know. With DCRs, the people, you're really going to -- you know, the environmental police, I don't bet would be 100%, because it's all about safety, you know? It's a better trail, 100%, you know? DCRs are the ones that, you know, no motorized vehicles, so we've --
We have one meeting with DCR at the District 2 office at MassDOT. And MassDOT, the EPOs are all in favor of it. DCR worries about the same thing, or the same concerns you have. Other people are using that trail. Currently, DCR does not plow that trail, so -- and we offered them at that meeting that we could plow the north side of the trail onto the south side and use the south side, and their pedestrians or whatever could use the north side. And we have the equipment. DCR has given us grants for equipment to do that type of work, and we use that to maintain our trails. You know, completely willing to do it. And they, you know, it's up to them, so we're, you know, we've got a lot of people on our side, we're just trying to convince them it's the right thing to do for safety.
It's grooming, not plowing. We wouldn't be plowing it, we'd be making --
Right.
Grooming it, you know what I'm saying? Plowing it means getting rid of the snow.
Right.
We'd be packing it, and as a matter of fact, we have people right around my shop that are snowshoeing on our trails, and they want to join the club, just because they stay at -- you know, you can be on our trail, it'd be easier walking. We're going to snow. People back on the trail, you know, you've got a lot of options. Especially if the trail's nice and groomed, like we have the equipment now to do.
Okay. So there's a motion waiting second. Any further questions for anybody on these? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck for you.
I'm sorry, you are, sir?
Larry Tucker.
Very pleased to meet you, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
From where?
From -- I live in South Hadley, but I'm a member of the Bellstone Club, and we're all working together to interconnect our trails.
Yeah.
This is a vital link. Obviously, you know better than anybody, Route 9 cuts Hadley in half, so we need to get from one side to the other safely.
Thank you. Anything else for trails, questions, yes, for us? Steve, anything else for trail questions?
Okay, we do have time for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Excellent, okay. So moving on to the regular agenda, then. So this meeting, we decided to hold tonight. This is a follow-up to a meeting that was held between the chairs of the Finance and Select Board, along with Town Administrator, the Town Moderator, and there was also a representative from Deerfield who has some experience in collaboration techniques, I guess. So we all met last -- it was last Wednesday, right? November 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we all met about a week ago, and there was a fair amount of discussion about kind of the best way for all of us to move forward together on the 2018 budget process.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, that's what I put.
Eighteen dollars.
Eighteen, so the 2019 budget process. And talking about kind of the roles and responsibilities of each group, and then how we might best march forward together for the benefit of the town folks that we're here to represent and work for. So I know that there's some material that was put in here tonight. I think everybody should have a link to the material that actually defines the roles and responsibilities of both of the committee and our board relative to the budget process. And then David also included for reference, David has started working on a draft annual town meeting warrant, and then also goals and objectives that you've been gleaning from all of the conversations that have taken place. So by no means are those two documents set in stone. They're works in process, but everybody hopefully had a chance to take a look at that. So anything left out here?
No, I think we've set the table.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, with that, again, I was just trying to characterize what's gone on before. Does anybody have anything they want to kick off the conversation with?
I don't know. I felt like that I thought Brian was very good talking with him. He had a little bit of insight on both sides. I think that we need to work really well together. It will make it much easier if we can focus on the budget instead of having two budgets. If we could -- he had some good ideas. I think that there's been some frustrations in the past where, especially when we're up at town meeting, the budget almost seems like it's the Finance Committee is responsible, or people talk about the budget, it looks like it's the Finance Committee. But if it's not balanced budget, but if we don't have any -- we're not able to present the budget that sometimes we think we want to present. So it's -- there's some confusion. Whose budget is it? Is it, you know, whose -- where does this budget, you know? David starts the budget, but then, you know, then who decides on the movement of the budget? Things like that. So and then when we spend many hours, and then sometimes feel, in some cases, disregarded in maybe felt in the past that, okay, well, we want to make sure we're working together as a team. So I think that that's one of the reasons why we're trying to do this today, so that way we could work together. The Finance Committee met last Thursday. One of the things, I mean, we were talking about how we're going to even get started, like with the boards, I mean, with the department heads. We talked about maybe we need to focus on it a little bit differently this year. Maybe we need to -- should be focusing on the revenues first, figuring out where our revenues start, before we even start with the items in the budget line. We talked about that. We talked about, you know, we don't want to spend -- we want to be, you know, know about each line item to help out to balance this budget. We want to present a balanced budget. That's our biggest thing, is we do want to present a balanced budget. We want other things, too, which, you know, where there's overrides and different things like that come with it, but we want to still balance the budget. That's our most important thing. And --
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it the will of the Finance Committee to balance the budget in the spring or in the fall?
In the spring.
Okay. I just wanted to know when.
Absolutely, in the spring.
Ideally, without giving it to free cash. Obviously, stuff happens, right?
We didn't want -- yeah, so we wanted to try to do that. We feel like we had started to look at it, and we're like, wow, this is -- looks like it's going to be a lot of work, you know? Maybe it's too -- because we thought maybe we should split up. Someone does public safety, someone does DPW. Maybe it'd be a great idea to do, you know, someone from Finance, someone from Select Board. We do it together, you know, and then present it. But somehow, we have to figure out, I think, a way to be on the same page. That's my thinking.
And, I mean, I was at the meeting, so I said what I wanted to say at the meeting, so -- but Joyce or Jerry, any thoughts you guys have? Do you want to?
I know that John and Donald, who are new members here, were all about making sure that the budget gets settled in the spring. And a long time ago, before I was on the board the first time, so I'm talking 12 years ago, that the budget started getting settled in the fall, because we simply don't have our numbers off our cherry sheet or what we're going to get from the government, from the state of Massachusetts, in order for us to figure out how much money we have available for it. So my point to anybody, and not the Finance Committee, not the Select Board, my point to anybody, is if you're going to go into that budget meeting, and you're going to think that you're going to settle that budget in the spring, then somebody has to explain to me how you're going to come up with the $350,000 that we normally end up coming up with at the end of the year, whether it be through free cash or cutbacks and capital improvements or stuff like that. But how are we going to come up with that money in the spring in order to be able to balance the budget the first time? I mean, do you go to stabilization? Do you put off OPEB for one single year? Because that's a big number, it's quarter million dollars. How do you come up with it the first time in order to not blow every budget that you have up and say, because where are you going to get a quarter of a million dollars? Where are you going to take that out of? Especially with talking about adding the fire department and everything else that we're trying to add to upgrade in the community. So I hear what everybody's saying, and I know it makes perfect sense, but how are we going to do it?
Well, we don't think that when we start to do it the first time, we fully believe that they're going to be short. I think we need to, just like when we give it to the departments and we say, you know, we want you to come up with something, they come up with it, and then they say, we really need this. This is their wish list. This is what we really need to function. So we need to present to the town people, you know, a balance, some type of balanced budget, but it's going to -- what we really need is we're going to need more money. So we probably will be going for more money, because we can't do the IT or the HR or all the things that we want to do. And even, now, we have the fire that has an increase, but we also have, you know, the new growth and another, you know, the two-and-a-half increase. So we do, we are getting some more money.
And a new tax assessment.
Mm-hmm. So, but we need to do the best possible presentation to begin with, and then, yes, we're going to -- we all agree that we want more than what the taxes is coming in.
Okay. One of the things I've always said and tried to get my point across with is, I said, if we look back at the last five years, I mean, we all talk about free cash, free cash, free cash. It comes from somewhere.
Right.
If we did an analysis on the last five years, where's the free cash coming from? How much is it? And we saw that, you know, every year, we get extra cash, which is coming back from this budget, this budget, this budget, this budget, and this budget. And we said at that point in time, and sat down collectively and said, we need to trim these budgets, and we need to explain to these people why we're trimming these budgets, these departments, okay? Because free cash comes from somewhere. We had $800,000 this year, we had $573 last year, and we had monies prior to that. It's not all leftover money in the snowplow and budget.
Right.
There's money that's left over in accounting, things like we've had with the water like last year. But if we could sit down and identify, and it's not going to be a full portion of what we're looking for.
Right.
It's going to be a point of what we're looking for. And said, you know, we, the Finance Committee, we jointly looked at all the budget numbers, where the extras were for the last five years, and we think there's $163,000 of the two or of the $350 that we need is, can be accomplished by trimming the budget in these roles and explaining that to the different department heads. I mean, those are the kind of things, and those are the scenarios I think we need to agree on to see about coming up with collectively how these things are going to work.
I agree with that scenario and how to do that. I think that's almost like your taxes, right? At the end of the year, I mean, really, you don't want to have that big refund. If you did it right the first time, you shouldn't, you should be closer.
Right, should be zero.
You don't want to have them hold on to your money. That's -- but we're constantly, we're doing it so we have this slush fund at the end and then using it. And we shouldn't do that.
Yeah, I just want to be cautious about that.
But yet, we still have to be very conservative, because we can't do it the other way. We have to plan for the worst case.
The other side of the coin is, what if there isn't free cash on a given year?
Yeah.
Right? Because maybe it snowed a million feet that year or what have you.
Snow, you can always go back to the taxpayer. Nobody, no taxpayer ever says, you know, we're asking for more because it snowed a lot this year. That makes sense to everybody.
Well, I was just using that as an example, but, you know, it seems like free cash is so mysterious that you don't know what, you know, it's very unsettling to me that you're going to rely on that at the end, and you don't even know where it's coming from half the time.
Which goes to the point that Amy and Jerry are both making. I mean, I do think that it makes absolute abundant sense to dig into the free cash this year and make sure we understand exactly what line items, what departments.
Well, David did that. He prepared last year's kickbacks.
But we need to have a really, really good discussion about it, and we also want to --
We never say kickback.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we also want to do our vocabulary strength. So slush fund and kickbacks are not the two starting places.
And we don't want to see, do I use those words? Okay, I'll ban those words from my vocabulary.
Excuse me, but you also have a scenario where we have timing differences.
Take a drink.
I don't have drinks today. I'll get one. Okay, thanks. But with timing differences, where if somebody intended to hire and they had it budgeted for January 1, and the hire doesn't happen until February 22, you have just an accounting timing difference. You still have a commitment for those dollars, but because it didn't happen until later, you're rolling money back at the end of the fiscal year, but it's artificial. So I think it's really important that we take a look. You're going to see a lot of that, I believe, in public safety, possibly some in DPW, I'm not sure, but we want to take those line items that David did, and we need to really discuss them to understand.
We should have explanations with them.
Well, and that's why we want to meet with the various departments to know what the details were, why certain things happened or didn't happen. And the only way to do that is to meet with the department heads and go through it with them, right? They're the people who know what they need.
Some of them are pretty straightforward, but I mean, I think, I think what I'm hearing is you want to do that earlier in the process, and we shouldn't be having these discussions when the budget is presented and then say, aha, you know, for years, you've been, you know, asking for more. So let's get that all out of the way upfront, so we have more clarity rolling into the actual expense discussions.
And we also want to sort of clarify what the priorities are for the year. It seemed like we had a priority for the fire department, then it disappeared, and it only reared its head again at the very end, and then there was a big struggle over it.
Well, and I think, David, isn't that your point of putting out, you know, right now, this is the world according to David, but these goals and objectives now? So if we can collectively agree that that's what we're marching forward with, and I think, you know, the goals really are going to be primarily driven by the Select Board, based on, and then we're turning to the Finance Committee to say, help us figure this out. How do we all get here? And if you think one of the goals is completely out of whack, then of course, you should speak up and say, what on earth are you talking? Why would you even be thinking about that now? Wouldn't this make more sense? I mean, that's the type of guidance we would, I think, be open to and expect from the Finance Committee, but I certainly think it makes sense for all of us to put the state around now.
And I think instead of just you going separately to these individual departments, that why shouldn't we do it separately? I think at one point in time, we did it together with the Finance Committee and heard it at the same time that you heard it, I heard it.
Well, so my experience from --
If you have the department in front of us, then, you know, that's easier to determine what their exact needs are and where we can go with it for the year.
So my experience from the past budget year, and, you know, I came on late in the process, I'm pretty sure, so maybe I'll be corrected on this, but I'll throw it out there. The various department heads came in, it was like a 10-minute thing, and they were gone. And everybody was, oh, yay, very good, thank you very much, rubber stamp out the door. And it seemed to me that that wasn't enough, that there wasn't --
I don't think it is enough. Long ago and far away, the Select Board sat down and said, this is what we think we're going to have for increases next year in the salaries and what the rates are going to be, and this and that and the other thing. And then that was conveyed to the Finance Committee, so everybody understood where the starting point was from the point of the Select Board. This is, this is the goals and objectives that we're actually trying to get done. And then the Finance Committee, who was very seasoned at the time, God's honest truth, is that for years and years, when we had a lot of longevity in the Finance Committee, they would understand that, you know, and they would have the meetings and say, listen, this is all we have to work with. So, I mean, we all need to, you know, draw out of the same trough. I mean, we're all trying to get the same things done. So this is what we feel. Present your budget, and then justify what it is that you're asking us for, you know? I need bullets, okay? I need tires, I need new trucks.
Putting in more tires than bullets.
Exactly, but we need everything, okay? So then everybody said, listen, well, we can afford that, but this is what we think we can afford. Can you live with that? And then they, you know, it was a back and forth, and you brought those people in, and you sat down and talked with them, and they talked their budgets exactly with what's going on, but their conversation to you was, you know, this is what we'd like. But we all kind of understood what the point was, what money was available, and no commitments were made until the last budget was reviewed. You know, it's not like you gave 15% because the guy was the first one in. This department was the first one in to talk to you, and you said, you know, great, that's, you know, that's what we're going with, you can leave. It's we're collecting the information, everybody has a wish list, we understand your wish list, what do you absolutely need, what absolutely is not an absolute need, but it's a want, what's a desire of you to make your department better in the town of Hadley. And then it all got brought, and you guys worked on it and said, if it didn't work, then the Finance Committee said, you know, listen, everybody's completely off their rocker this year, we can't possibly do what everybody wants to do, so we need some help. We kind of understand your priorities, but, you know, here's what, here's what we -- and then you worked it out like that. And that was, I think, we expect, I'm sorry, I expect the Finance Committee to be able to try to massage and work a budget based on what kind of the desire is of us to go forward with the town. If you see it's working, then great, and you just take it and work it and massage it, put it together, and bring it to us and say, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do.
Right, and so at the end, so this department has, you know, what they, if you give them the numbers, this is all we have, then they say, oh, we need, you know, we really would want, we have, they have some wants. And then, great, if we did have the free cash in the fall, maybe we can give some of those wants on some things, you know?
But wasn't it an eye-opener for you when we had one budget where you asked people to give money, and the senior center was able to give us $10,000? Did you wonder why?
Yeah.
I mean, and so all --
She explained why.
Well, I know why, I know that, but I'm just saying that there was something there that was able to be given back at that time.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, if you look at all of the budgets that way, then --
We feel that there is in more of them, but I don't think that not everybody is, and one of the questions was, when she gave it back, is this, it's not, it's not a permanent thing, is it?
Right.
Right, but she had extra money because of age.
One-time service.
Right. Nobody wants to release or give back money, because they're afraid that they wouldn't get it for next year, right? Going on to say they have too much money.
So can we talk about, like, how we spend our time, too?
Sure.
Because I think that's, you know, some of the frustration for, on both sides, is, as Joyce would say, we talk, 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 but we spend a lot of time in meetings, and then we aren't necessarily as efficient and productive as I would hope we could be. Firmly believe in the 80/20 rule. And my experience over the past -- And my experience over the past several years is that we spend 80% of our time talking about 20% of the items of consequence. Meaning that the way that we've always done this is we have, again, every single department gets a hearing, whether you're, you know, the town moderator with a $100 budget, the select board budget, you know, and we schedule everybody and everybody comes in. The reality is when we start looking at the line items of most of these budgets, they're effectively fixed costs. So why couldn't we this year try, I'm all about doing the revenue like the very first thing, as part of that revenue digging into the free cash and like know really where, what's our starting point? And then David could likely would, you know, maybe one pass through with the finance committee and a review from the select board. We could go through the, I'm going to use $20 million operating budget, whatever we're at now, and identify the fact that maybe it's 16, 17 million, I don't know. But of that is effectively uncontrollable. That probably breaks into two categories because I'm including people in that, right? So, but here's all like just the stuff that the lights have to be on and everything else. And you're not going to do anything about the cell phone bill necessarily, you know, we've already looked at a lot of those things. Then you're looking at people. And then there's everything else. And the everything else that may or may, you know, is kind of like squishy discretionary stuff. That's a few million dollars. Maybe that's where we should be spending our time. And I bet my bottom dollar that we're talking public safety, we're talking the DPW. Maybe, you know, council on aging and library for good measure, but it's really the, those bigger departments. And we don't necessarily need to be spending an awful lot of time with the planning board and all these, these other. I mean, we can just kind of leave them alone. Again, we always want people to have an opportunity to speak their piece, but unless there's significant changes going on, why are we even?
Well, so one of the things.
And I think that might go to your idea of maybe having some work groups or something that are kind of keyed in on certain functional areas.
Well, we would also like to know, you know, once we talk to those departments, could they share resources in a better way than they are now?
Exactly.
Do we need three coordinators in three departments with one professional coordinator be able to handle all three? You know, and save us some money that way.
It depends which departments you're talking to.
We love using public safety as an example.
Example, yeah.
Of how well they, you know, have shared things and how they've saved money.
Forcing them to live in the same building.
Well, they're in the same building, so that does make a thing. And both safety. So, I mean, that's where they mesh together, you know, and using the dispatchers for both sides. I mean, so that's, you know, that's.
But there might be other places where you can share some resources.
But right now, it isn't the, right now, Park and Rec is sharing a space with, you know, council on aging too. You know, they're sharing space and the library's going to be right there and they're all going to be in the same kind of area, even if they do.
And we can always provide instruction, you know, I mean, from the select board level. So it happens that we have two very cooperative, get-along, great chiefs who are more than happy to go down the hallway and talk to each other and figure this stuff out. And like that cell phone was a good example of that, where they said, wait a minute, you know, can we do something on software? I mean, they're looking at each other's budgets and figuring that out. But where the DPW wouldn't necessarily have a logical connection to the council on aging or, you know, whatever. I mean, we could always say, look, we would like you guys to take a look at it and empower the department heads themselves to have a conversation and perhaps come back with some ideas, you know. But they, I think they need that push at the beginning of the process.
Well, then there's the issue of what the priorities are going to be for the town. Should all be on the same page with that. I mean, are we going to actually try for an HR department? Are we going to try for IT?
It all comes down to money, Tom. And you're asking the voters right now, next week, to spend between the library and the senior center. And, you know, you're going to now want to come back in the spring and ask for whatever we're going to need. It's going to be a tough, tough sell.
The question is.
It's not going to be easy. People really, I mean, when you look around the town, we really are a town of fixed incomes. Even though you might not think so, but it is. There's probably more seniors in this town than there is families now with kids.
And just to be the devil's advocate, just for the sake of conversation, we think next week, we're going to have some direction from the town on those two things, those total overrides that we're talking about there. And we think we've got some, a lot of support the last couple of years for other things that we've asked for, for overrides. And I don't think anybody expected nine things to pass last year.
So do we stay on the same path? We're still on the ambulance issue. The RFP went out.
Yep, due back to the 15th.
Back to the 15th.
So we'll have more clarity there.
Day after the election to see where we're going with that. So all these things are things that are, you know, upcoming for the year.
So we're not going to move forward on IT and HR and all of that?
No, no, that's not.
We're, it's in discussion. I'm just saying right now, this is, we have things that have left over from this year that we haven't really finished that will lead us into maybe another direction for next year also.
But here's, here's the thing, just think about your own, I don't know, pick a, pick a situation in your family. You get to the point in life where there are enough people in the household where you really need two cars, right?
Or five, but go ahead.
Okay, so you have one vehicle, you need two. Or you had a sedan and now you need a minivan, whatever, right? But you have a transportation problem. The problem's there. The problem doesn't go away. And I think what we're all saying right now is we have an HR problem. We have an IT problem, okay? It would be nice, to Joyce's point, if you had the money to go out and just buy a second car. You may or may not have the money to buy a second car. So then the question is, here's the problem, here's the elegant solution. I can't afford the elegant solution. So now what do I do? And what we do in our everyday life is you sit down and you kind of figure out what are your options? And then where can we, where can we be? And maybe it's going to take us two or three years to save for a new car and in the meantime, we have to ask Terry to come and pick the kids up or something. You know, I mean, whatever. But I mean, I think, I think that's part of, part of this process that there's the, okay, well, if we just ask, figure out how much money we need for everything we want to do and go to the taxpayers and ask for it, that's certainly one possibility. I don't think anybody's necessary.
Which takes time.
It takes a lot of time and I don't think we're necessary.
Which is why you have to have a desire early so that you're ready when the town meeting comes.
Are there options out there right now for us to go with another town with HR?
Right, can we take stuff forward?
Be collaborative with them, you know? We're still waiting for HCOG to do something. We've asked them. You know, where are they at, you know? So, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we really need to explore.
And I think that's where we should really be spending our time.
And we're missing one of the biggest part of the budgets here at this meeting, and that's the school department. They are the biggest department in the town.
And they claim they need more babies.
They do. They need seats in the, Benny's in the seats. So, I mean, that's a different way of looking at it.
I have to old. Me too.
But this is good for the discussion because if we're on, if we're all talking about HR and then we're under the understanding that that's where we're going and then we're, you know, trying to do a lot of work and plan for, oh, well, we would need an override. And then if the override's not supported by the select board, well, we just did all that and, you know, do we, where do we, we don't want to spend a lot of time working on something that you're not on the same page.
Right.
So it's good if you, you know, right away, okay, we're not ready.
I don't think anybody should work on anything that we're not on the same page about.
Right, right. So I think we need to just to communicate better to, so that we are on the same page, so we're doing the work.
And if we have regular check-ins along the way, again, don't, don't wait for the quality control to happen the week before the town meeting and figure out, oh.
Well, it seems like the last two meetings have been like a little crazy at the end.
Yeah.
And that's what we're going to try to get away from.
And that's one of our frustrations, like, because day before and we're changing plans like crazy. Like, no way.
But over 15 years, that's just how it happens.
Ah, it's nothing, Joyce. Tell them about the day before. We were looking at the water treatment plant, you know?
So that actually gets to my line of break up. About the override, about doing it the same way for 15 years plus. New this year, the finance committee is still getting a handle on the numbers exactly.
Not doing it for 15 years the same way. I'm just saying, I can tell you stories about the past 15 years.
Fair enough, but still coming down to budgets, always a scramble and here we are, still trying to figure out how to work together. Granted, we're a new committee, but there's a lot to go through every year. And it's always a moving target with how our revenues go and new growth, et cetera, et cetera. The problem I see though is that there's too much work to do for too little time between us, right? So we want to talk about sitting down with departments, really going through line by line and trying to get that free cash down. We want to talk about regional collaboration with like surrounding towns to fulfill IT, HR. It's a lot of work for us to do. And it's been a lot of work because these things have been on your guys' plates for years now. We've been talking about IT and HR, we've been talking about regional dispatch and ambulance services. And there's a reason that it always gets pushed off until next year is because there's not enough time.
It's hard.
It's hard.
And, and the money.
And money. But that's what I'm driving at with an override is that you have, the whole point of IT, HR, and I want to roll finance into this, a finance director, is that they support town staff and they enable town staff and our committees to do more. They go out and do these things with the surrounding communities, gather the information, prepare the reports. We could ask a finance director, put together a full override for us. What would that look like? How would it work? Rather than we as committees trying to figure that out, right? But if we're going to keep saying from year to year, well, we'll look into a few options to put a Band-Aid on it. We'll look into a few other options here to try and squeeze a little more free cash or to make things work, hoping to stave off an override. We're never going to get the finance, the IT that we actually need to support us to be able to do even more work, right? Ultimately, it shouldn't be a finance committee sitting down and going line by line trying to prepare a budget. It shouldn't be a select board either. It should fall on David, who has more than enough on his plate.
I thought you were going to say there's more than enough time on his hands.
Yeah. And it should fall on a finance director to be preparing these budgets on your behalf. And then you reviewing them and just as it's laid out in the documentation we have, kind of midway or towards the end of the process, bringing it to the finance committee, who then jumps on, starts collaborating. There's kind of a set order that other towns do this in, that we're unable to do it in because we don't have the professional support.
So you're making an argument for goals, the goal priorities.
Right, so when we're talking about goals and goal prioritization, I think the override has to be number one. I think at some point, if it's been put off, I mean, we never had an operational budget override, right? So it's been put off year after year and, I mean, hell, if you just look at new growth, and we want to actually do this analysis, if you look at new growth combined with Prop 2 and 1/2 and compare that just to the rate of inflation, I don't think it's like caught up, right? It doesn't keep up with it. Meaning we're kind of operating at a lower and lower deficit comparatively, year after year. So we're trying to do more with less money, never pulling ahead, always falling farther behind because it's just, Prop 2 and 1/2 was meant to be conservative. It wasn't a very liberal estimation on how the economy would grow and the revenues we'd need. New growth hasn't exactly kept up with the numbers we need because, you know, the meals tax, that was great when that revenue stream came on. I understand it was supposed to be funneled into capital projects exclusively and kind of keep us on track with that. But more and more, we had to use it to supplement the operational budget because we keep falling behind on it. And more and more, I understand that certain pieces of the operational budget are coming out and being put into one-time capital requests when they might have otherwise been able to be operational. So we're constantly going to the taxpayer and asking for an override, whether it's through the capital items or these big municipal building projects. And our revenues aren't keeping pace. We keep trying to put Band-Aids on this year after year and we're going to do our due diligence to do that this year. But when are we actually going to go for the big jump forward that we need to hire the staff to enable us to start getting the ball rolling on outpacing, right? Because ideally, what we'd like is that free cash is a buffer that we give ourselves so that even if halfway through the year, you know, we're over our projections on expenditures and revenues didn't come quite as much as we wanted to, the free cash buffer we gave ourselves that we built into the budget means we don't have to balance this all in the fall. What we're doing right now is saying there's too many things that we need to have happen. We can't pay for them all. And then if there's any free cash come the fall, those other needs that we have, not wants, but needs that we have, like public safety with it last year, those other needs that we have, thank God we had some free cash, now we can fund those needs. That's not how you should be using free cash in a budget. But that's because we have a bunch of needs, not wants, we have a bunch of needs that we can't fund with the amount of money that we have. So I feel very strongly that in terms of goals and priorities for 2019, the override has to be at the top of the list.
Well, can I?
I'm sorry.
This is just where.
I rented quite a bit.
Yeah, this is where I'm going to disagree with you just a little bit. Again, I think that they, I totally get where you're going. It's called planning. But you're, you're jumping to a conclusion. And the conclusion you've already drawn is that the override's the solution. You may be 99.9% right, right? But I think the first thing we have to agree on is the prioritization of the goals because everybody might not be in agreement right out of the gate about the finance, the IT and the HR. Again, I know how I feel. I know the conversations we've had, but we need to make sure everybody's in agreement. Then you figure out how to fund it. So I do think we should try to separate the two. There's the what and then there's the how. And, you know, put the stake in the ground on the what. What are we willing to move on on the what? And then we talk about the how. And because that will then drive the discussions, do you do, you know, again, there's the Arlington Plan. You know, they're different ways of approaching an override. And then you also have to put it in the context of what people are able to handle. To Jerry's point, next week, we'll have a much better sense of how strongly the taxpayer or the voters feel about having two new building projects, knowing that it's going to increase their taxes.
Getting from you, and I think I agree, is that the finance is the most important thing. It's, IT's important, but finance is what, is where the biggest gain is from what bank for the bucket, if what. If we had the finance person that could put these numbers together for us and identify opportunities, is that necessarily hiring a person in-house or can we sub that out? I mean.
Now you're talking options, right?
Yeah, it's an option available to us and if we ask the citizens, where's the proof in the pudding? Instead of the override, what if we just said, give us the opportunity, we'd like to, you know, instill this opportunity and thought process. We think that financially, if we were to go outside and potentially find somebody that can identify opportunities for us to save money and to finance the things that we need to finance. And then we bring that back so it's like, and now we have a matrix. Here it is. If you do this, you can get that. If you do this, you can get that. If you do this, you can do that. This is your savings and this is operationally what you save. This is manpower, what you save. This is financially what you're going to save.
And maybe it's going to take two or three years in that one. Or maybe it absolutely, the payback is so quick, you're stupid not to do it in one. But we don't have.
Did the town have a study done, it was a study that suggested certain things for the town? What year was that done in?
Long range plan.
Which one? Yeah, long, or it suggested a financial.
It's got the new one. Financial management recommendations, right, in 19.
So there was 2013 study and the 2017 study.
Okay, in 2013 suggested then to hire somebody specifically for financial in 13? And so now we're in 17.
Fire study in 2012 suggested hiring more personnel.
Okay, so I'm kind of in agreement when, I think that, me personally, if we can show them that we're trying to do the right thing with the income, the revenue that we have now and then we show the residents and explain to them what the benefit of us is going to be by hiring certain, you know, things or people, which I think is, from what I gather in this building alone, an HR person is huge, just employees morale. And I think when you have that, you're more productive, which is also a cost savings. So I'm kind of in the feeling too that we need to kind of like decide what the priorities are for your board and our board. Primarily your board because we can't move forward without you deciding that. So I think that is huge right now, and as you say, Molly, worry about the revenue after. But just my take, I know everybody says overrides are, you know, hard to plan or whatever, but, and I'm not saying anything negatively, but I just say, you know, like with the senior center in the library, it was walked in, thrown at us and we were reactive and not proactive. And so I'm thinking that we want to be proactive, especially looking at hiring HR and IT person. Or sharing, because I'm into sharing the resources as well, but. So where I feel, and I kind of think that the rest of the board feels, is that we need to really set, our goal is to keep moving on right now as we can and not prolonging it and waiting a year or two years. I think that, you know, with the commitment from the select board and the finance committee, I think we can get enough knowledge of why we need certain things and be able to show the residents why we need it and how it's going to be a cost savings on the road and, and move forward. I don't think that if we put it off, it's, you know, it's always going to be something else.
But we haven't even touched on tonight, which is a subject that will be coming up for us, is the split tax rate.
Well, that's another thing to look at as well.
So I mean, that's, that's another thing that we haven't even discussed tonight.
It doesn't generate more revenue. It puts the owners in different places.
It does, but it's something that sometimes the homeowner will be a little bit more receptive to other things if their taxes aren't as high.
That is true, and I agree, but I think, you know, we got to give residents a little more credit. I mean, I'll be honest with you. Did you ever think that the residents at that tell me we're going to go for the finance committee's budget? I never thought it would happen. And I think that if you explain it correctly and they want, that's the thing, they want to hear from us.
They want to understand.
They want to understand. They want to know. And of course, there's going to be those certain people that live on a fixed income. I get it. I'm elderly and I live on a fixed income, but, you know, I think talking about the credits and other ways of giving certain people breaks is, or this, you know, work, the seniors working and their hours, I think it's huge. And so, you know, I, you know, there's a lot of. And so, you know, I, you know, there's a lot of changes, we're growing and we're gonna continue to grow. We're nice, gonna continue to grow, I, you know, I see it happening and this building, this right here and what's in it hasn't grown with the time. And I think that if we can get there and make it happen, I think that the residents are gonna see a cost savings. We're not gonna keep, you know, we will have free cash at some point. And so we won't be having to ask them, can we, you know, can we borrow or buy a truck or this or that? All needed things that should be in the budget anyways each year. You know, certain things should be looked out five years, every other year we're gonna buy a dump truck. It should be in there, you know, we shouldn't have to worry about it. So I think if we take the jump, in my opinion, I think that our board, and if I'm not speaking correctly, you can speak up. We wanna pursue taking that jump and really looking into the IT, the HR, and focusing on right here. This building.
So then, just to kind of summarize what I think I think we're agreeing on. It sounds like everybody's in agreement that we need to really have have, you know, agreements and that they may take, you know, a lot of conversation. But wind up with some agreement on what the goals are for the next fiscal year and then perhaps even a couple beyond. But, you know, certainly focus on what, where we see the town going, what we see the needs to be. Get that sooner rather than later. So like before the end of this calendar year, we should be at a place where we can collectively look at each other and go, yeah, this is what we're trying for. It sounds like we're also in agreement that it makes sense to get the revenues kind of out of the way. Get that discussion over and done with upfront in terms of what we already know. Where the free cash came from and what the projection looks like from the financial management team on revenues and say, yep, that's what we're running with for the pie to work with. Then there are gonna be those related projects, which is really digging in and understanding all of the permutations of possible override scenarios. Not pulling, but just understanding it, understanding all the permutations of split tax rate. Getting our heads wrapped around that, those are two kind of side projects, but necessary. And then we'll be providing instruction to the department heads. And then I guess the question I'm not clear on is when we then march forward to that level and start interacting with the department heads, are we doing it in working groups and then coming back to everybody? Or just big meetings?
So my only question is, and I'm not criticizing or whatever, but we've known by all these reports that we have back two thousand thirteen, where and what the town needed then. And so we knew it wasn't gonna change. And so I guess I kind of wanna hear that the commitment from, and you, trust me, I know that you have those whole town worried about. We just worry about the finance part of it, but there's many other things that you do that we do not do. And, you know, I guess I just wanna hear for myself that the select board is committed in working on this and not putting it off, you know, as far as, you know, the IT and the HR and that. And, you know, I just, I don't want it to be forgotten.
I'm willing to work on it, but I'm also wanting to look at alternatives.
Absolutely, and I agree with that, shared services.
I'm not saying they should be put to the side, but I don't wanna just say, oh yeah, we're gonna go for an override just for-
Exactly.
HR and IT, I wanna see us do something other than just saying that.
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely, I'm all for, so that's all part of looking into it.
It's just agreeing on the goals and then everything else has to follow.
It's agreeing on the goals and saying that, yes, we're gonna move forward on this. And I, you know, you guys, you meet all the time and I understand that we meet twice a month and that come to your meetings. But, you know, but maybe the thing about breaking into the groups, I'm very interested in the HR and so forth. If there's one on the board that could work with me and line up the, you know, the communication and really research that. That's kind of what I'm looking at, it's kind of like, you know, are you willing to commit your board with our board to be able to look into those things? So we can get all the answers and do it sooner than later.
What's your idea for the shared service? I don't mean to-
Oh, like HR.
With the school or with other towns?
You could, with the other towns, you could do with, does the school have HR person? No, they don't.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so no, you can do it with other towns. Just like, say for an example, I'd asked about the tree warden. You can actually share tree wardens with other towns too. And actually, we share services with Northampton already, which is-
Veterans?
Veterans, so it's the same-
Waste, waste and measure?
Yeah, so it's the same thing like that. Yep, towns are open to that. And I'm saying Northampton and Amers because they're closest to us. There might be Sunderland, I don't know if they have-
Different county, so it's a little different, but-
Well, probably, but-
We wanted the COG to jump in line with this because we are not the only town that has these problems.
Absolutely.
And when you solve it for one, it's just like, I mean, if Granby and Belcher Town, you know, all have the exact same things that they're dealing with under these circumstances. And you run one scenario as to, you know, what makes sense for those particular towns, it works for everybody.
Absolutely.
And for some of these shared services, the person doesn't really necessarily have to be physically around. Like a finance person, for example, sits in front of their computer, doesn't matter where their computer is.
That's right.
Their computer could be in the Bahamas, they could take care of three towns in the north.
I know, but the IT part of it, well, it gets all that stuff, right? So that all the computers talk, the departments talk to each other.
The HR for my company is in Chicago.
But there's a system and a process.
How many employees?
Many thousands.
But, you know, if the school, I'm not sure, I've never heard the school needing the, or saying, I don't know what their process is over there.
Well, they use, they use our, they use here, they use the treasure.
The previous-
Oh, our treasure, the HR person is the treasure?
The Jones.
Oh, right, right, right. I meant for disciplinary things, does she do that as well?
Yeah.
Really?
Workman's comp.
Well, right there, we have our HR person already then, right?
The disciplinary process.
I'll get Tom on the phone, we'll find out how that happens.
I think that with some of the large, if you were a larger town, larger organization, if you're talking about adding positions, you could talk about alternatives and kind of a sweet spot for what you're getting for your dollar, right, in terms of value? And that's where regionalization comes in and, you know, shared services. But I think when you're so far behind in a lot of these aspects, like Hadley is, IT being my profession, just kind of looking around, like it needs so much dire support. You could have two full-time people hired, not get everything that you really need done. And you, they'd be earning those paychecks dollar for dollar. Every dollar you invested in IT would get you that dollar back and then some. But if you're talking about shared services, you're not even talking about full-time person equivalents. So you're talking about just enough to get by. I mean, our IT situation right now is an example of that, we use Perigis, which is through the HCOG, and it gets us by. It's enough, but it's not getting us ahead in any way. So that's why when you talk about the alternative, I really still think that the override should be, and probably because it takes so long to put together, the main option, and the alternatives are just that, alternatives. But if you wait year after year for these alternatives to come online, or if we share HR, it will be better to have a HR person dedicated to Hadley in the town, working with the staff, than to outsource it. Could we get by with an outsourced? Sure. Could we get by with a half-time or third-time financial manager? Supposedly. But that's not gonna start pulling us ahead. And if we ask for an override, if we go to the taxpayer and say fifty thousand for a part-time financial services, a little bit here for IT. And that just keeps us limping along, we're gonna be back in another three or four years saying again, yeah, that didn't really work out the best, we need more to enhance it again.
But that's part of the argument for the goal prioritization. So you're already making your argument for the goal prioritization. And I think, I think that's, that's probably our next discussion.
Yeah, so that's, I was actually wondering, can you clarify a little more what you mean on goal prioritization? Because when Terry brought up, like, we've had these goals for years now. They are important, I think that if five hundred thousand dollars of operating revenue just dropped in our laps, we'd know what to spend on, where to put it. Like, we've identified those needs. If you're just talking about which one's of utmost importance, so if we can squeeze money out to get it, which one is it? I think that's the wrong way to be looking at it. I don't think we should try and say, well, which one can we maybe squeeze in this year by reducing free cash or, you know, cutting a budget here or there? I think we need to be looking at what do we need and how can we talk about this for an override to get ahead?
Yeah, but as I'm saying, so when, if, in the goal prioritization process, we need to get everybody on the same page. You feel very strongly about HR, IT, and the finance director. Guess who else does? So, but, that, you know, again, there are two groups of people here. And everybody's voice needs to be heard and we collectively need to come out the other end of that conversation. It may or may not collectively go that way, right? Maybe it's finance director only and we are willing to put off HR. I don't know, but I'm just saying, I think that that, that agreement has to happen first. And then, then we move into the how phase.
So when do you think that will happen?
I'd like to do it like within the next two meetings, honestly. I mean, David took a pass at some priorities.
Well, how does Jerry and Joyce feel about that happening?
I have no idea what you're talking about for money. That's the first thing I need to know, is what are you talking about for money? And why, I think we need to research it. If you're talking about the half a million dollars or, you know, I don't know what the number is, okay? But I would like to know at least ballpark what the number is. I can back anything that anybody wants to do, but if there's no-
Well, I think HR's a good, we could figure that out, but for IT, I mean, I think that that's not gonna be easy, right? Because it involves this building, hiring two people, equipment, all that stuff, I think that's a huge-
So you've already determined we need two people?
Well, how about I, can I just say?
Joyce is making faces now.
Can I just say that where I work, there's only two people and a lot of things never get happening for us, so. I think more than two people would be nice.
Hopefully he's all right with me saying it on camera. I passed around even my office and with colleagues that work in Hadley doing some stuff with public safety. And I pitched the plan, showed the reports that we've had, and he said, yeah, you need at least two people to make that work. One's gonna have a hell of a time getting any progress done. One would just be keeping up on things, fixing things, seeing where we're at. You'd need two to actually start pulling ahead in any way.
Sure, but then you could also have one person be the point person and the project manager and outsource some of that to Perigis or Northeast IT Consulting. So again, there are multiple ways to skin that cat to solve the problem. And maybe that's only the first year, and then the second year, you're moving towards the ultimate hiring of in-house personnel. But I, those conversations have to play out and there's a lot for each one of them, so. I mean, I, what I was, what I'm hopeful of is that, again, within the next couple of meetings, David's done a draft of some goals and objectives for the year. I agree with some of them, you know, not all of them.
Love them, hey, tell me what you want.
Yeah, you know, we've got the master plan update that just came out. I'd encourage everybody to take a kind of a read through that. I mean, I think it's a nice guidepost to remind everybody what the residents have said that they would like their town to look like. And then the finance committee's meeting, so if you guys, I'm sure, already have ideas about what, Gabriel clearly has ideas about the priorities. But, you know, collectively-
Well, we, you know, we've kind of been through that and we've been hearing about these priorities for the entire time that I've been on here. And now we're hearing that, well, we're not really set in stone on those priorities, but we've been talking about them forever and ever.
I don't think you heard anybody say, we're not, again, we're moving into a budget cycle, so again, to Joyce's point, in your own house, you may have decided that the bathroom is a priority. And somebody else in the house thought that the kitchen was a priority. But you can't do both of them at the same time.
We did the kitchen.
I know you did. It's a very nice kitchen too, but it's just that kind of thing.
She still wants the bathroom.
So you have to have agreement on what it is you're striving for first.
I have a question though, just because Jerry's looking for numbers and I am as well. So the IT part of it, can we hire a consultant to figure out what the cost, we hire consultants for everything else, right?
So what did they say?
Can we have the IT report?
Of how much it would cost us? The HR person, I think, would be fairly easy by just talking to the towns next to us.
Yep.
Well, and again, we have the Employers Association of New England, so they're a fabulous resource.
So can, how do we, how do we use those resources then?
I say we go get those answers.
Right, but the question is who's getting the answers?
Who's getting the answers?
Individually, is David doing it, are we gonna get wordwork?
Oh, no, we need to focus, we would not, we shouldn't duplicate their efforts, as everybody's already said, we, you know, let's figure it out. I'm here to figure it out, you know.
Okay, so how do we, how do we get those then? So that's what I was, I mean-
What's available to us for resources, I'm finding this information out.
Two sources that immediately jumped to my mind are the wage and salaries studies by both COGS, FurCOG and HCOG. That's available online, you can look up the IT.
That's for wages, but what, to do the IT right here-
Yeah, get scope the projects.
We said, somebody did, yeah, we just said this as an IT report.
It's a project.
A misunderstood, and misunderstood.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I looked through it, it was rank with priorities in terms of, you know, green to red, kind of severe to, can wait. And you could, you know, go anywhere from like fifty thousand bucks to keep us going to like half a million dollars to kind of get swanky with it. But conservatively, I would estimate maybe two hundred thousand dollars in capital, like upfront capital to get things going. Whether you spend that all in the first year, it's kind of tough to say, depends on how much staff you hire. Same time, if you have two staff, two hundred thousand dollars, you can get through that pretty quick. If you have one staff person, you wouldn't need all that capital upfront, so it does kind of vary.
And then layer the complexity of possibly sharing services. Because we have Northampton asking us to participate in a document management system. We have South Hadley, David met with today. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is looking to go out and possibly offer regional services for IT on their own instead of the COG. So you need somebody competent and utterly focused on this issue. And I think that that's the first expense. Because I honestly don't think that we have the wherewithal to scope this out until, you gotta know what the house is gonna look like at the end before you can figure out.
So how do we, how do we get that then?
Well, Dave and I did-
So the five-year capital plan will have the costs that Gabriel just outlined. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, what's, I mean, it's not gonna just be, IT is not just hiring two people.
It should eventually be more, depending on how you consider IT.
No, but what about the equipment?
Somebody needs to provide direction.
Direction, the, the, the software that you're gonna need and the laptops and all that stuff.
Training and-
And the training, that's all. Rewiring this building to support it all, to have a little room, to have your brain in so it stays cool and everything doesn't blow, right? That's all cost. So we, we need to know how much that's gonna be. You're saying five hundred, two hundred thousand the first year, would cover that?
No.
He's talking, he's talking about, the Northeast IT Consulting report was, it was, first of all, it was limited in scope because they couldn't get all of the information that they needed from Perigis and from some of the employees here. So their best guesstimate was, you know, and again, they used a ranking, like this is on fire, fix it like right now. Which many of those things actually have been done. Then there was a second tier of, boy, you're really like hanging out there if you don't fix this. And then there was the next layer of, like, most everybody in the world does it differently and stop doing it that way because it just got stupid. That, that was their report as best as they could. And I think that if you glean, pull numbers out, you can figure out that, yes, we need to make an investment of a couple of hundred thousand dollars in equipment to get all of that to happen.
Right.
What it did not do was design what the IT
Needs to be.
Needs of the town actually are in the context of, of the world today.
So that's what I'm asking, and I think that's what Jerry kind of wants to know too, right? It's like the whole dollar figure. Is there somebody that we can hire to give us that information?
Yes, and David, you wanna go there?
So we've agreed to be part of an E and R grant through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for getting that basic information done for free. So that we can then plan in year two for the implementation of the IT plan.
So when, when will that happen though?
That grant is due on Thursday.
Well, we've known about this from December, so let's-
No, you just found out about this today.
I know, so what, so when will that happen, I'm sorry?
The grant deadline is Thursday, not tomorrow, but the next day.
And so then will you know?
What does it take, a couple of months for them to come out with their answer?
Tomorrow actually is Thursday.
Not this Thursday, tomorrow, but next Thursday is the deadline.
Oh, next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So my thought was is, you know, we know that this needs to be done, great if a grant comes in. But, you know, if it's something you gotta wait a year for, I would like to see, and I think it's saying, yes, you know, to move forward now and another, using another avenue. So I guess that's what you have to decide.
So, you know, there's a certain amount of strategy going on here. We applied for an IT grant through the INR program and we received that. That makes us ineligible to apply for that same grant. We've partnered with the Regional Planning Agency in order to get around that ineligibility so that we could participate on a regional basis with that same grant that we otherwise couldn't do on our own.
So how much grant was it that you've received?
We received a fifty thousand dollar grant.
And where's?
That money is being spent on the SCADA project.
They were very specific, they would only allow it to be spent on that, we were hoping to use it for that.
Right, well, okay, so I guess we're back to where, I guess we're back to where- Great, well, okay, so I guess we're back to where, I guess we're back to where, you know, how soon are we willing to work on these things?
But doesn't this one thing beg a small work group?
Right?
I mean, it's not just one thing we're talking about.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, David and I have already been doing a lot of the work. Gabriel, clearly, this is his, you know, his profession, so he's knowledgeable about it. I would think at a minimum, just to get all the pieces together, the three of us should be working on it, and then maybe, you know, somebody else if they want to jump in. Human resources is another area, the finance director is another area.
You want to do that with me, Jerry?
I do, too.
All right, great.
So I think, yeah, these are working groups, but I think what we need to really focus on is, you know, just the basic budget.
Yeah.
How to get by that, and how are we going to handle the departments?
And I'm still trying to clarify how to frame it. I mean, so IT, taking that as the example, you could come in anywhere from, maybe we only need one person, a hundred thousand dollars starting capital, maybe we need three people and half a million. You could come in anywhere in there, right? No matter what that amount is, we were struggling to pay for three extra firefighters for half the year last year. And I think that's going to be the top priority for this budget, is funding the rest of those firefighters, so not just finding the cash that we pulled out of, in, you know, a whole town meeting for half, but for full amount. So no matter what that number comes in at for IT, whether it's the low end, the high end, anywhere in the middle, same goes for HR, same goes for finance, I don't think we're going to find in the budget. You can talk about priorities and which one comes first, none of those, we're going to be able to find enough in the budget as it is to fund them.
So isn't that why we're simultaneously also looking at the split tax rate and override options?
And prioritizing what you're looking at doing.
Yeah.
Split tax rate, if it doesn't get us too much more money, it wouldn't be...
It's a different split of the pie, but it could be theoretically, it could be a strategy, and it's important to understand what possible strategies there are other than just this.
So on the override, if the businesses are paying more the override because their rate is higher, then it's not as big an impact in this people. And God's honest truth is, businesses don't want a town other than business people that are in this town.
And the questions are going to get asked, so fully vet it now, because if we don't have the answer on town meeting floor, we're all dead, right?
And that's just a thought process anyways. I mean, but, you know, that, that's one thing that we're talking about here. And we don't have all the answers tonight, you're not going to have all the answers tonight, no matter what you do. Government takes time, it runs at the speed of a battleship destroyer, I don't know, whatever it is, and it's supposed to.
Joyce is going to volunteer to work on regional dispatch?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's my main concern, I'm trying to get some upfront level of investment, because the finance committee expressed that we didn't want to spend a lot of time working on something that then didn't even make it to town meeting floor or was kind of dropped off. So we're talking about working groups to look at IT, HR, finance, that's just the three, beyond public safety, regional dispatch. If we're talking about working groups and working from now until springtime meeting to bring that, none of those would be able to fit in the budget as it is now. Any of those is going to have to go into an override to fund our efforts. So we need to be clear that that is the goal for it, if we're going to be developing working groups and costing all this out.
And that's fine, but I think we need to put the override aside for a minute and see how we're going to still get through, because we still...
Well, that's a separate thing, that's Plan A.
Pass or not pass or whatever, we have to balance the budget. How should we work together to deal with the departments?
That's actually Plan A.
Yeah.
That's actually Plan A. We have, we have to have a budget for next year, and that's with level services that we have now. If it's going to be enhanced, and we're going to try to make better things happen around here, that's Plan B. It has to do with garnering the right information on at least these three things. And we haven't even met with a single department head yet to understand their ideas.
Or, or gone through the document that David prepared, because he's talking about DPW and some other areas in here as well, that we haven't talked about tonight.
So at this point, what are you, you know, I'd like to discuss how we think we're going to, so we're going to go with, ask, start with the revenues?
Yep.
And, and then, do we want to have one big group, or do we want to pair off maybe into smaller groups to make it easier, deal with the departments? How would we prefer to handle the departments?
We're bringing the departments in for ourselves. I mean, we need to talk to them individually, so if you want to assign...
Do we need to, or can it be done at the monthly meeting, based on a conversation that's had here at the monthly meeting?
Well, it can be done at a monthly meeting, it doesn't have to be a next year.
So that you don't drag everybody in fifteen times.
Correct.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking, make it as efficient as possible for them. But, but I, I'm just wondering, Amy, I think we need to get our act together, I mean, we're having a conversation tonight, let's get our act together a little bit, we have like a little bit of time. The department heads wouldn't, there's no reason they shouldn't be working on their budgets right now anyway, and you know, they're pulling their stuff, they've got all their information together. So they're kind of framing their arguments, I'm sure. Then they're waiting for the specific instruction, you know, from us, which we're likely not going to be providing until late in December, to say, this is what we want to see, you know? So those meetings that you're talking about wouldn't be happening until after the first of the year anyway, I'm thinking.
Right, right, right.
So I think, I think we've got time to then, like, figure out and say, okay, this makes sense.
Okay.
Because again, if they're really kind of like, just three areas we're hyper-focused on, you know, what are we doing with everybody else?
Is there a lot to ask of the finance committee and over the course of your next couple of meetings, is to take a look at where the free cash is coming from and tell us whether or not there's any clear-cut identity as to where, if there's opportunities to trim some of that somewhere? If we looked at the last five years' worth of numbers, where did the money come from? Let's justify that and let's understand that first and foremost, because it may not be, you know, that, that would be very helpful to me.
Absolutely.
So I think we largely tried to do that last year, too, in looking at, you know, five years back and just looking at the numbers, but I think free cash is such a moving target because from department to department, their costs go up or down every year on a project basis or on a staffing basis, and, you know, they have people leave. So we're playing whack-a-mole every year, as we should be, trying to limit the free cash on a department basis, but if you just look at the figures and the trend line and say that, well, they kind of use this and then they didn't or they did, you're not, you may be trying to cut something that's actually a need for this year, but won't be a need for next year. I think it'd be more fruitful to work with the department heads with the budgets in front of us and say, what of this do you consider free cash, rather than us just looking at a number and saying, that looks like free cash?
David could actually probably, without calling them in, I mean, I would think that can probably be handled via email. I mean, you're going to find that there are only X number of line items that, that generated that free cash, and you, I think, we know the answers to half of them.
Wait, David, you provided three years already, as I remember.
We just, we could discuss it and get explanation to each one, that's all. And I don't remember, I remember seeing the form, but I don't remember reviewing each, each one to see an explanation, like, that makes sense.
I know Joyce has another commitment she has to get to tonight. So, go ahead.
So we have an all-boards meeting coming up on Tuesday.
Next week, Tuesday?
Next week's Tuesday, or are we changing that?
Do we have an agenda for the all-boards meeting?
I haven't seen an agenda for the all-boards meeting, you know, I, but God's honest truth is, we've got an election coming up next week. Until I see the results from the election, I think that we are spinning our wheels. God's honest truth.
That's, that's the day of the election.
Yeah.
So you won't know until the next day anyway, probably.
And then we have a select board meeting the next night.
Yes, you do.
Well, but cancel that all-boards meeting, then.
Well, what if we, what if we did this? If we're agreeing on, on the goals, right, so collectively, what if the finance committee and the select board presented the, the goals at an all-boards meeting? And then again, yeah, the planning board have an opportunity to give an executive summary of the master plan update? Would that be a good agenda?
Okay, is that something for Tuesday next, or are we changing?
Possibly for Tuesday.
All right, I'll let everybody know.
Wait, so what does that, are we doing something on Tuesday next week?
We're not having an all-boards meeting on the...
But you are going to discuss that on Wednesday and next week?
What's our agenda look like next week?
Uh, next week, you have, you have a cracking agenda.
What's that?
What does that mean?
He's going to tell us.
I'm on TV, sorry.
We're going to have our major discussion about tax classification. This is an opportunity for us to get all your questions out on the table so that we can understand what, what you're understanding is and we can provide you with the information. That'll be followed in two weeks' time by the actual tax classification hearing. We have Lake Warner Dam historic preservation, we need to talk about what happened at the voting, it's a tri-board meeting, and...
Next Wednesday's a tri-board?
It's a tri-board meeting?
Yeah.
At six o'clock?
You said seven.
I don't think we said anything.